Good morning and thank you for for being here. My name is Adam Block. I'm the Chair of the Needham Planning Board. And this meeting is being conducted solely by Zoom. And is being recorded. This meeting will not have public comment. The purpose of our meeting today is substantively to discuss zoning strategies for for solar. In our commitment to taking climate action for the town through the zoning by law. And then in addition to that, to discuss conditions for medical office project on Highland Avenue, which we'll discuss subsequently. And then we have minutes and some correspondence and so forth, but at this time, I'd like to begin our first item on our agenda. I think I actually should probably take attendance since we are fully on Zoom. So before we get to solar, I'm going to do that. When I call your name, please say present or I or here or whatever else you'd like to acknowledge your presence. Paul Alpert.
Present.
Artie Crocker.
Here.
Natasha Spata.
Here.
Jean McKnight.
Present.
And from our town staff, Lee Newman, Planning Director.
Present.
And Assistant Town Planner Alex Lee.
Present.
Very good. With that, I'd like to roll into to solar. Lee has provided us and Alex with a number of materials. I had some comments. I'm sure my colleagues do as well. But I think this is in great shape. I think you've done extensive research. It's clearly that a lot of our neighboring towns haven't really expanded on their basic solar bylaw. So we're going to be doing this ahead of some of our immediate communities and yet I think that what we have is is an excellent place to start. And I and I think this we can get this passed in May. You know, I think this would be awesome. I I'm going to turn this over. Artie, forgive me, I just and Lee, I just want to ask, ask the question. If if Artie and I already, I don't mean this to be in any way controversial. It will be, but I don't intend it to be. I just need to know procedurally that we've raised the question and we've dealt with it. If if Artie earns a living selling solar, does he need to recuse himself on a on the zoning by law? I have my own opinions, but I don't know what the actual rule is on that.
Have you asked Town Council?
I've talked to Town Council about what I do in Needham.
Oh, how would that be any different about me reviewing buildings?
Yeah, or or selling real estate or anything like that. I mean, just.
Well, it is, it is. I don't earn a living.
I do. I earn a living from designing buildings and planning.
The difference, the difference, the difference that would come into play is the difference that would come into play, for example, if a project comes before us. I would, I would not take part in solar on that project.
Well, you've done that. You've done that repeatedly, Artie.
Excuse me?
You've done that repeatedly.
Name one.
Muzzy, it came up.
No, 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 no. I would not install. I would not be the company installing solar on the project.
I see what you mean. Okay, so I the my, my under my thought on this is where climate action is regarded in Needham as a municipal good. That and we're not talking about a specific building. We're talking about public policy. Having someone with subject matter expertise is actually a benefit in the formulation of the policy. But I so I, so I think it's totally valid that Artie is able to participate in this. But I just wanted to ask the question, and if you're satisfied, I am, and I'm happy to to go forward, although I'm interested in Artie and what Chris, you said you spoke to Chris Heath, what he said.
I don't have the wording in front of me, but I made it became was very clear that I was not going to have participate in any project with my company that's coming before any that's coming before the planning board. That I would accuse myself or I would not sell into that project. I would not accuse myself, but I would my company would not be selling that project. Matter of fact, I don't, I'm not doing commercial in Needham anyway. At this point, but I would not participate in making money off that project.
Paul.
Yeah, I not only think that Artie doesn't have a conflict in helping to draft the zoning by law, but I think that his expertise in the field actually helps us draft an appropriate by law, and it's very important that we have him at the table.
I I agree. Thank you.
I agree, Adam, but I appreciate what you're bringing up. Because we should always be mindful, but I agree that I think already it's not project specific. I think the benefit of having him on here is tremendous.
And Jean.
As I prepared for this meeting, I thought Artie and Natasha will be the ones who will help us get through this, and I very much appreciate they they're both of them are here with us today.
Jean, ready to go to lunch? I'll pick you up.
Lee, do you concur?
Yes, of course. Yes.
Okay, okay, good.
And Adam, just to say, it's very good to bring up the question. It's it's actually, it's always important for us to bring up the question to make certain that we are correct, to make certain that we thought be thoughtful about it.
Thank you for for saying that, Artie. I'm sorry. I didn't call you in advance. I just literally ended. We we've talked about solar before, and I don't recall that we had raised this. Paul, you're right to ask if we'd spoken to Town Council. But I think as a matter of public policy and that particularly that this is an aim. You know, it's regarded as a public good. It's, you know, it's valid that Artie is able to participate. So having dispensed with that. Let's go into the substance of the thing. I I go through this, I guess. Almost chronologically based on what the materials were set, what materials were sent to us. So if we go through the memo. Does anyone have any comments on page one of the memo?
Yes.
Okay, so you want to lead us off with your comments?
Yeah, first off, I'm going to just make a generalized comment that that somewhere in that somewhere in there, you may want to say something about vegetation or or a fence within a 12-foot zone distance from someone's property. Like, anyway, that's a generalized comment.
Fair.
Not on page one. On page one, we need to essentially have a 1A, 1A point one, obviously, they can be labeled here, but in there, there needs to be essentially a solar energy system, comma, building mounted solar canopy. And then it just says inactive, then then the rest can be the same as as 1A. An active solar energy system that is structurally mounted to the, in this case, to the top of a building. And then I was going to some point, we'll talk about a maximum height of that, and I'll talk about the reason. If you aren't, I can talk about the reason now why we want.
I I spoke on that point. I know we've talked about that notionally at a previous session. I spoke to excuse me, I think I'm getting a cold. I spoke to to Stephen Frail. And
He is not, he is not on the planning board. He is not.
You're right. He's he's not. He's you're right.
He's in, he's talked to me. He's only, his concern is when it gets to town meeting that it doesn't, that something doesn't tank, that doesn't tank the the vote. And so I've already talked with him. I know what he has to say.
Just to, so, so just for the benefit of others. Although we've talked about notionally the building putting a canopy over a building as opposed to a canopy over a parking structure. As Artie is raising it, it's a question for the board and we need to resolve it now or later. Do we want to?
Can I finish? Can I, can I finish? What I want to finish what I was talking about, that I can give the reason why I'm saying that. Because right now, right now, you're raising the reason why someone is concerned about that.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not already just indulge me for a minute, please, and then I'll, I'll, I'll recognize you without a problem. So what, just to be, I want the whole board to be clear on what we're talking about, that we're, we're, what Artie is including what's not in here, and I had the same note already because I remember in our previous discussion. I think you had sent or someone provided some pictures of what that.
Yeah, there were pictures showing the projects that were on the state. Exactly. Yeah.
So what's not in the memorandum is the inclusion of a newer form of a solar canopy, which would be a structure over a building.
Well, it wouldn't be over an entire building.
It would be, yes, it would be.
Yeah, Paul, it could be. Yeah, in this particular case, it could be. There would be allowance for that possibility. Yes. Those visuals that were handed out showed it. It was actually architecturally was beautiful. It was actually.
Have a canopy that covered an entire building?
So you could have, so there are several forms of it that we that we saw.
Ah, okay, I see it.
Here, the structure is over
Yep.
the building itself. I I think that this gets into some complicated areas.
These are, yeah, these are over the roof. But then it's got the supports going down to the ground.
If it, if it's going beyond, if, yeah, if it's going beyond the front of the building, yeah.
Right.
Or it has support structure onto the roof itself, but.
Okay, because what I was envisioning in talking with Artie about this offline, just the two of us, yeah, wasn't a quorum. We, we, we were talking about a canopy over over like the HVAC system, the, 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 the roof mounted systems that were already there and and then having, having a canopy over over those. So I think, I think what Artie is envisioning, and correct me if I'm wrong, Artie, is because I don't want to put words in your mouth, is both a canopy over an entire building like Alex just showed us or a canopy over the roof mounted systems.
Well, I mean, certainly, certainly if the, certainly if you can go over the whole building, then that would, that would also cover going over.
Right.
Mechanical system.
Right.
I mean, architecturally, it can be a beautiful thing. Obviously, the mechanicals do not, cannot cover the whole structure. But we do have an allowance on the mechanicals to go 15 feet.
But right now, but right now, in the memorandum, the only, the only discussion of a canopy is a parking canopy.
Correct.
Where if the memorandum is something that like we're developing to present to town meeting, we, we want to make sure that we are also including the possibility of these canopies over, over the building or a canopy over the.
Yes.
The memorandum will inform what's comes next, which is effectively the, you know, the by law. My
Sorry.
Go ahead, Artie.
Just, I mean, really, let me just, okay. So I mean, the reason being is again, architecturally, there can be beautiful things. We can have us, you know, we can, we can always have something in there that calls it back to a can go beyond the footprint of the building. We could always do something like that as we're, as we're discussing this further down. We can always, we can always deal with that. We can deal with the height limitations at some point, what's, what's going on. We can deal, we are the way they're going to be allowed in town. We can deal with whether it could be special permit. And and for example, let me give you an example of why we want to allow some version of it even in the separate town. I'm going to say quote some version of it. We could alter that because if there is ever any type of rooftop activity, restaurant or anything like that on the roof, they having, having, having a canopy over that would be extremely beneficial. And then that canopy obviously should be allowed to be a solar canopy. So it's perfectly, it makes perfect sense to allow them in other parts of the town. Not just the industrial area, but we can modify, we could always modify what those are. And this, the, the percentage or the setbacks in the roof edge, for example. So it's not, so it's not.
You'd have to do it now.
We can't, yes, no, no, we're not that we're right now. I mean, right now, we can say we're going to allow something, then we can, we can allow it, but then we can, then as we're getting in, as we're progressing into the public meetings, we can retract, we can file, we can we tweak it or tweak it, what it actually should say. Is we need, we need to allow it. I, in my opinion, we need to allow it in the rest of town as well, but if we could have something so it's pulled back from the edge of the edge of the roof.
Can I bring something up?
Yep.
What is I, I thought that the solar regulations in the other towns was really helpful. I don't know if, if, I don't know what your strategy is for, for how to kind of review all of this, but it feels like it might be worth just kind of doing a big picture of understanding because there are like, you know, six different criteria and each town does it differently. Would it be helpful just to go just a big picture for lead to, I mean, what I found is, I mean, just to, what I found is that for me, Sudbury, I mean, Lexington is, is the least stringent, right? They're basically everything is as of right. And Westwood says, well, almost everything is as of right. There are a couple of things that are special permit. Woburn is residential is as of right and everything else is special permit, and then they have overlays and blah, blah, blah. So is there, maybe we can think of that's bigger strategy? I mean, just as, as a thought, maybe, maybe everyone thinks that this isn't the way to go, but just big picture, what's our stance on, on how to move forward with this, rather than going like item by item by item, just big picture and then item by item by item.
I, I'm certainly open to that. But one of the big picture items, Natasha, is that you did not see in the other municipalities is the question of building mounted solar canopies. Artie had, Artie has just identified that he wants us to include that, even though it's not part of these other municipalities.
Lexington has it.
Where, where do they have their?
It says building mounted solar energy systems are permitted. You know, and, and as a use of structure, you know, it's permitted as people use and accessory use.
Yeah, then it says height regulations for structures on a building.
And they have no, they have all the regulations of a building. There's subject to the setback requirements of the district. I mean, Lexington seems like a good place to start. I don't know.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, Natasha. You're talking about the building mounted, right?
Well, I, I guess I'm talking broadly because I think we're like going straight to one particular item, but broadly, I think there are different strategies for the towns, and then there are pieces that align.
I, I, I understand.
And Lexington does say, Lexington does say.
One second, Artie, please.
No, Adam, please.
I'm the chair, just. I'm going to recognize you in a second. I'm giving context to the structure of this conversation. Otherwise, this is going to be chaos and Looney Tunes. You raise a good, you raise a valid point, Natasha, about having structure for our discussion and having a big picture so we can compare the, what the elements are between the different towns. That's, and, and I, I think we, we can, we can do that and we should do that. I don't see in Lee's summary, unless I'm missing something, Lee, that they have a solar, they have a provision for a building mounted solar canopy. I'm not talking about integrated into the building. I'm talking about.
It's under land use.
A building.
That wasn't defined as a canopy. I'd need to check with, with, in terms of how that's being applied.
It's, it's saying solar energy systems, and then if you go to solar energy systems, a device or structural design feature, a substantial purpose collection of water, and then there's solar energy system canopy. So I, I just want to end building mounted.
Yeah, I mean, Lexington does say building mounted solar energy system, then it's then down below, it says height regulations for the structure on a building. Then in this case, it's given 20 feet, but you know, as I said. And then it also says the by law exempts solar energy systems from the maximum coverage required 25%.
They're the most lenient out of all of them. They're letting, and there's no, no. There's really no review except so site plan is special permit approval is small scale or subject to they're, they're subject to site plan review, and then large scale is required or subject to special permit. So
If we don't.
Be as of right.
Now, if we don't include it now, we can't talk about it later.
I don't know that that's necessarily true.
That's not true.
Well, no. Resolving the zoning today, Artie. We're getting close to it. But it's not 100% resolved. So just to, you raise a good point here. So it, to get to May town, to get to May town meeting. Alex, this is a scheduling question for you. When would we have our draft for the select board to have our meeting with the select board, after which they would refer it back to us? For us to then hold a hearing.
There, there are some options. I guess the earliest schedule would have the planning board finalizing the language at the first meeting in January, which is January 2. And the later one would have you finalizing the language on Tuesday, January 16. And these are both for the annual, by the way. The special would have a, a shorter timeline.
Okay.
But I, but I think independent of that, I mean, you could include this now, advertise it that way, and then based upon what you heard at the hearing, decide to pull it out. So you could advertise it and consider it more broadly and not close the door now.
That's, that, that's, that's right. I'm, but we have until January 2 to determine if we will.
Yes.
So all I'm just saying is you know, we, it's, you know, we have six weeks to give further thought and, and how if we choose to regulate and allow building mounted. That's all I'm saying because the rest of this is flushed out. And I would, my, my preference is to go through what we have now. Resolve as much of this as we can. This is to your point, Natasha, on our structure and on this, and then come, and then come back to the, you know, to determine whether we want to include a building mounted canopy and what the regulations for that would be.
I disagree.
I understand that, Artie. I get that.
We should just include, we should just include it now. We can fine tune the language. Then at some point, if it's not going to fly, it's not going to fly.
But we should, we should, I guess that's why I'm saying we should go through and discuss big picture, each piece of what we want added to it, and then we can start tweaking it, right?
Yeah, we can, we can, we can fix it. We can tweak it later, fine tune it later. But from a big.
Of course, that's true. That's true. That's true with all of this stuff.
Correct.
But I don't Lee, when when you were doing a deep dive in all these other municipalities, did you interpret their, their canopy provision as what Alex just showed us?
I don't, I didn't ask myself that question. I mean, I looked at, at, just relooked at Lexington's bylon just to make sure I had these definitions correctly. And I, and they are correct. I didn't really think about whether or not it implemented this and how, and how, and how it's being implemented in Lexington, but I think Natasha is probably right, but I would like to follow up with the planner there just to confirm.
Okay. And so was it included and allowed in other municipalities?
Not that I, no.
I didn't read, I didn't read it there either. I didn't read it there either from the, from the summer. I didn't read it. So if I could, if I could finish my, I just had two.
Go ahead, Artie.
Comments on page one. Again, add a 8.1 or something like that. This is solar energy systems, comma, building mounted solar canopy, colon. And, and active solar energy system that is structurally mounted to the top of the building. We can deal with the height regulate. We can deal with the height later on. The other thing is, is the one E. That needs to be changed because that is out of date. Not only is that our date, but it was contradictory in any case. A 10, a 10 kilowatt DC system is is around 400 square feet. One thing. And, and any, the systems in Needham, a roof map, the systems in Needham, the average that's been, that I'm installing in Needham, this is myself, I know this is the average of that, that I install in Needham is somewhere around a 17 to 18 kilowatt DC system. That's roof mount. So in any case, there's a regulation that changed in the state for the allowance of net meter. That changed from 10 kilowatt AC to 25 kilowatt AC, which is not the same thing as DC. They're different, different, different numbers, different, different structures. So it's changed to 25 kilowatt AC, a 25 kilowatt AC system equates to the possibility of a close to a 39 kilowatt DC system. And when so let me finish. And the 39 kilowatt DC system and that 3900 kilowatt DC system, and remembering that all the other regulations we have for percentage of land setbacks and everything would, would still come into play for what could actually be done. So 39, so we 39 kilowatt DC system, we need close by 2500 square feet. That the array itself would not be 2500 square feet, but it would be distance between. You know, if they were going to have two present back, who would be distance between them? So 2500 square feet. So both those numbers give some construction there. Then what that means is on one that, then, then, sorry, so that was one D, sorry, one D, then a one E, that's if they change us to 2500 square feet and a 40 kilowatt DC to a 250 kilowatt DC. That's the only changes. And there's, and all the other, and then all the other regulations that are in the by law will have restrictions, how big a system can actually be on a piece of property. But there are pieces of property that could easily handle that size. It would be, how roof houses that handle that more.
Can I ask a question, Artie?
Of course, yeah, of course.
Are you, are you saying that the newest systems generate more power in less square footage?
Well, they do, but that's not, they, they do, but that is necessarily why this is being changed here. But they do. They're, I mean, they're more efficient than they were years ago, but again, that's not why these numbers are changing. They're changing because A, they were wrong, and when, when it says 10 kilowatt DC, that's completely wrong. If anything, it's just some issues at AC. But even that, that would, that would have been wrong to the 1750 square feet. There's no, there's no connection between the two in that case. But the regulations have changed. The regulations in the state were voted on a year ago, August, increased the net reading AC limit to 25, which again equates to about a 39 kilowatt DC system.
The small scale should be 2500 square feet is what you're saying.
Yes, correct.
And, and, and then in E, it should be 2500 square feet, but less than still 40,000 square feet?
That would be, that, that, one second.
Yeah, I, I actually pulled those out of the state's model by law.
Oh, yeah.
The 1750 and those numbers come right, right, out of what, what the Department of Energy had recommended in their.
I saw that. I saw that in Dower before. Did Justin look at this in the engineering department?
No.
We should have him look at that, too.
Yeah, I mean, technically, 40,000 square feet is probably way more than is needed for a 250 kilowatt AC system. Two for like 250 kilowatt DC system is probably way more than is needed for that.
Why do we need, Artie, why do we need to give a cap of 40,000?
Well, I'm not saying we do. Is, I'm, you know.
Well, because I, I think you're having, because you're regulating the larger systems and your larger, in your, in your overlay district.
Yeah, I mean, technically. Technically twenty thousand square feet could be, could potentially be perfectly fine for two fifty kilo DC system. That being said, when you get into systems of that size. There's more space needed even around them. Forty thousand square feet is way more than is needed, but there's not necessarily a reason to change it because.
Just to give a sense of, just to give a sense of perspective. In our residential districts. You know, S R A is one acre. And forty thousand square feet is just under one acre lots. And in SRB. Uh, you know, we have a lot of ten thousand square foot uh acre lots. And already you're effectively saying on medium size. On a medium size. System. Uh, to achieve two hundred and fifty kilowatts DC. It's uh roughly twenty thousand square feet plus some room around the edge. So maybe. Uh, if we give another ten percent for that, two thousand or twenty thousand, twenty two thousand five hundred. Square feet, is that?
I mean. Right, I mean, maybe approaching more than twenty five or so, but we we what I just realized is that when you were talking about lots and so forth. We should probably think about it, we should probably make make something in here to make certain that. Or think about whether we want to make sure there's actually a domicile on that land where any solar system, where any either of these solar systems are, especially there. Especially in the medium, when we get into large ones.
Well, it's structured that way. These are accessory uses.
Still limited by the lot, but still limited by lot coverage.
Correct, correct.
Ten thousand square foot lot. And uh someone. Uh, has a house. What's the lock? If it's lock coverage is. Was it twenty five percent? Twenty five hundred square foot footprint of a house. Were allowed an accessory structure. But we would be restricted because that twenty five hundred square feet that you're talking about for a small scale. Would they be prohibited from putting it up?
Well, well, again, remembering that they would not be able to put up a system that size. They would be able, they would could try fit something in there, but it wouldn't remotely be this size, not not a lot, not on the land. Not a land or behind the house or any around the house at all. This is, this is not telling this, this is not saying the size they have to put in. This is just defining what what a small scale system is, that's all.
That's right, but because we're limited. In lock coverage and other dimensional, but in particular lock coverage. This affects what someone could put down in their. Yeah, I, so the, so that that lever to use one of the own. Things that you guys did a great job, by the way, uh, uh, Natasha, I. It, you know. It relates, so I I want to go back to an earlier question to understand. If what you're saying for a small scale, and this is what I'm focused on, in particular for the residential. Districts. Because I could imagine a scenario over time where someone has solar panels on their house structure. Solar panels on their root, on their garage that may be detached. And if they have a decent sized lot, do they want to put in, you know, some small scale? Uh, ground mounted as well.
Or or actually, let me just see, also what happens sometimes in. When the lot becomes a little bit more an issue, although this would necessarily affect the percentage coverage. But visually would affect the person's home, sometimes they do pole mounted systems, which actually I just realized isn't even in there. That may have been. Pole, pole mounted. Ten inches in diameter, and sometimes they have one pole, sometimes they have multiple poles, and the system is on top of that. That raises off the land, it raises above certain shading conditions. So I need, we need to make sure that's not being detailed here. But sometimes that can, sometimes that can help negate. Issues with with what's happening with their property, the backyard, they don't want to take it up with a solar system. As much so they put a lot of pole and that still gives them some land. Land to be under.
So what you're thinking about is in my backyard or my side yard. I'd have something like a telephone pole. And then I, and then I might have an array that's attached to the telephone pole.
Yeah, yeah, wouldn't, yeah, wouldn't be a telephone pole, but yes. It would still be, it would still be affected by these setbacks and the lock covers. I think it's still, I think a pole mount that should still be affected by lock coverage. I suppose you'd think about that, but it's certainly should be affected by setbacks. Has to be affected by setbacks.
So, Gene, I see your hand is up.
Yes, um, as long as we're talking about solar structures in residential districts. Um, I want to make a point here that uh, but I think we're perhaps not aware of. Our zoning by law. If you use the term residential districts. It includes multifamily districts, it includes. Um, apartment A one districts, it includes North Hill District. Um, so I think we have to be careful in using our term residential districts. We should either specify um, single residence A and B and general residence. And there, then we're being careful.
Okay.
Want to have special regulations for um, multifamily districts that are different from the. Commercial districts, then we have to think about that. But I'm inclined to go the simple route and just make sure we're we're specifying that we're talking about single residence and general residence.
I agree. Thank you for saying that. One.
Adam, can I add something to that? Some of the other towns. Um, do the single family residence versus multifamily, and then they do commercial separate. So they look at it as three versus just residential. And I think um, that's why I wanted to go through some of these, because I think that they all do it a little differently. And that we have to figure out which way works best for us, but.
So that, so that I, that's absolutely right, and we definitely have to do that. Already, so we're now talking about adding. In the depths, in some form of definition structure, definitions, and then later we'll deal with the dimensional regulations, but. You're, we're now talking about adding two additional things, building mounted canopies on the one hand. And then on the other hand, pole mounted canopies, correct?
Yeah, we, yeah, we should probably add pole mounted because they are a thing. Yeah, we should probably add pole mounted.
So, so then to your point, Natasha. That would be the point of, that will include that as the point of comparison. To each of the uh municipalities. So. And we can look at as we're dealing with these other towns, how they define. The size of their small scale and medium scale, just bearing in mind that is already is talking about. Those other municipalities may have made their definitions based on doers. Which may be, you know, which may be out of date, which is why. You raise a very good point. I think it will be helpful to, you know, if we could get Justin Lee to validate that. See what he recommends in terms of the definition for output capacity and size and square footage. I think that might help inform. You know, our ultimate decision. And then. Already, so we don't take up the time. Now, or Lee. Are you, Lee, are you comfortable to be able to define pole mounted?
I'll, I'll, I'm not, no, well, I will, I will.
See, we, we can talk, we can talk offline if you want.
I was just about to recommend that, and then we'll, for our next discussion, we'll. I, you know, I think maybe we'll have that, so. Cause what, the thing that I'm struggling with is this concept already. That on the, that on the one hand, you you mentioned that with the newer technology, you can generate. More capacity with a smaller footprint?
This isn't, like, these comments are not based on the newer technology, they're based on two things, A.
I I agree, I I understand what you're saying, but you're, what you're saying now is that with the newest, with the newer technology.
No, it is not based on newer technology, this is based on regulation change and changes in the state. The net metering policy, which we're done because that's, that's the only way we're going to meet the climate action goals. Is if that net moving policy is raised, because of that, largest systems are going in, even on, even on houses. And in that largest, in that correlation to one to one D. Uh, those numbers of thirty nine kilo DC and two twenty five hundred square feet for a small ground mounted system.
So, Lee, Natasha, I'll come to you in a second. I just want to, I just, I'm trying to just understand something basic here already. Is it true, I'll try another way, is it true? That. With the newest technology. These panels can generate. More capacity with a smaller footprint, is that concept true?
That is, that is correct, that is a correct question, yes.
Currently, but what I guess what I'm trying to say is, um, we should not base it on. A system because systems change every single day, and by the time this goes through, it's going to change again. And it might, you know, phones, you've seen them, they went from big to tiny to big to tiny, so. I, the technology is changing, I wouldn't base it on a system, Adam, I would base it on a strategy for zoning.
And the, so it's, so the one thing here.
One second, already, how do we accomplish that, Natasha, if all these other towns follow doers' strategy? By def- by definition through capacity and footprint?
Not, I I mean, I saw, I again, I think we should look at Lexington, who is.
Well, I think Lexington sets its small scale at fifteen hundred square feet.
Which is, which is a footprint.
But as a minimum, they don't set maximums, right?
And they say that a small scale um is a system where the total lot area. Covered by the system is less than fifteen hundred square feet.
And what about a medium size? They don't have?
Then they, I think, jump up to um, just basically a large scale, so it's anything above that.
They're, 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 they're just more um, broad, and then they have the areas where they want to. It's done through, you know, through a site plan review. The different pieces, that's.
Yeah, just, just, just keep something in mind that doer regulation, a ten kilo DC system. Again, is a ten kilo DC system is. About four hundred forty square feet. That's a ten kilo DC system.
Square feet.
So those numbers are totally completely contrary to you, even if we said ten kilo AC system.
So then on that basis, if you're saying that you can get ten kilowatts of DC power in four hundred square feet. Which is a quarter of the one thousand seven hundred and fifty square foot footprint. Then why would we increase that small system? To twenty five hundred square feet?
Because ten kilo DC system is a twenty, is a ten kilo DC system. Was wrong in the first place, it probably should have said AC, the AC system regulations have increased, I said before. The regulations have changed to the allowance of net meter. To twenty five kilo AC. From ten kilo AC.
Gene?
I don't understand why we're focused so much on kilowatts. Um, what we're concerned with is uh kind of the look of the thing and um. Um, the ground coverage, um, because that relates to stormwater and so forth. Um, and we say when in our definitions. We use square footage, then we have in parenthesis. Equivalent to a rated name capacity of about a certain number of DC kilowatts. Um, and we're not, and we're not. Defining small, medium or large based on the kilowatts. We're defining them based on the square footage that they cover. So I, I just don't understand why we're having this conversation.
We can just delete that whole provision, some towns don't, don't include it, it was included.
It was included where?
It was included in the, in the state's model, but some towns include it and some towns don't. So you could just delete that, what what's in parentheses and just go with the square footage coverages, the surface area.
Before we resolve that that's what we do. To Natasha's point, we've looked at Lexington, Lexington does not include in its definition capacity. Although to, you know, to Gene's point. And to Arnie's point, capacity can, you know, speak to the, you know, the footprint of the thing. But let's look at what other towns do in terms of. You know, Sudbury, for instance, they talk about. Uh, they define their systems. Based on both. Uh, the square, the footprint and the capacity. They do that for a small scale and they do it for a ground mounted and they don't. They're silent on medium size systems. And if we look then as well at Westwood. Westwood uh just defines large only. And uh they do it on a footprint of five thousand square feet um or more. And then Woburn. Deals with. Uh, a small, medium and large, and they do it both. By capacity and by footprint as capacity speaks to footprint. And if we look at um, NADAC. NADAC also deals with small, medium and large. And it looks like from what, from what Lee has provided, they only deal with it in terms of. Footprint and not in terms of capacity. And um. Other communities. Don't really have the same level of. Detail. They just really deal with what, with what Needham has done. Uh, which is effectively regulate large scale.
Yes, I mean, it's, I mean, a lot of towns are just pulling the the number seventeen fifty from. The number that's been hanging around for a long time, I mean, twenty five hundred, so twenty five hundred is only seven hundred and fifty square feet more. It's a, you know, think of fifty by fifty and keep in mind that a lot of the regulations are going to detail where a certain system is. But when you have a property owner and another project town which has plenty of land, and they're going to have, their usage is going to be extremely high. Um, I don't see a need, I don't, I don't see a need to send them through the special permitting process, basically, and I don't see a need to do that.
We're, we're not talking about the, we're, we're not talking. In all of the things that we've, that we're proposing already. We're not talking about a special permit process for small or medium. We, we haven't, you know, we haven't even got to process yet. All that we're talking about right now are how we define at this point, small.
Yeah, I understand, but later on for meeting, we do, we do talk about a special permit, which I think we should, we should.
Now, we talk about a site plan review, we don't.
Uh, I thought it was site plan review based on the special permit process. I think that's, I thought that's what it said. I think that's what it said.
Yes, that's what it says. It's a, it's a site plans, it's basically, there's a question about that, I mean, it's, it's basically, it's. It's a site, it's a, it's not a special permit on you, it's a site plan special permit, and the question is whether we have to modify that.
Well, we already know for Hone, you guys, one of the things you want to do is make a zoning by law change that separates out. Uh, you know, the concept, I think, Gene, you've talked about that before, Natasha, you have too. Of separating out a site plan process and a special permit process. So I kind of read this with the. You know, differently, that we're not really dealing with a special permit. Which would otherwise be prohibited under a protected use class. From the, effectively the Dover.
For housing.
The provision I gave you in the bylaw is basically modeled after how NADAC does it. NADAC treats it as a site plan special permit, but if we can't do that, then we can't do that. But it's modeled after how NADAC manages their solar.
But regardless of the word special permit, it's really a site plan, it's. Review criteria and a separate intent.
That's correct.
So, um. so.
Artie, this is why I understand. You're talking about you, what you, what you're recommending is that under D, rather than having it be seventeen hundred, it should be twenty five hundred?
Just change it.
And then under E, it under E, it should be twenty five hundred to four, four forty thousand?
Correct. And just change the ten kilowatt DC to thirty nine kilowatt DC. Just change, then on D, E, change ten to forty.
So Artie, my question is, when it changes in a year or two? Then we have to go back and change the zoning?
No, 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 no.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're not putting something in that we have to go revise it. That's so, you know, so prescriptive.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, you know, I know, I don't, I don't see that. The fact is that, I mean, eventually could be uh forty, no, no, I mean, eventually a forty kilowatt DC system will be a smaller dimension. It eventually will be, but but is it gonna, is it gonna tell, oh, we should go back and change it? No, things don't change that fast. In twenty five years, all bets are off. But things don't change that fast, Natasha. So I see no need to um bind ourselves, bind ourselves.
Except for the facts, except for the fact, Artie, that, you know, Dewar's Dewar's published this. Uh, you know, their recommendations, and now we're talking about, and now we're talking about, you know, as you said, I uh that those standards have already changed in a fairly short period of time.
I said, that's, that's a valid point, a valid point, Adam.
One second, uh, Paul, uh, Jean had her hand up first.
Unit, I want to bring Paul into this conversation because colleague colleague, um do you read the these definitions the same way I do? In that um the the wording in parenthesis that says equivalent to a rated nameplate capacity of about ten kilowatts or less, et cetera, is not setting any kind of standard. The only standard is the square footage. Do you agree with the my reading of that?
I agree with.
I agree, I agree.
I agree with Jean that this is a zoning bylaw and what we're concerned with is the way things look at at the property, at our various properties. And so for our definitions, um, I'm not sure that within the zoning bylaw, we even want to have those parentheses because it's only going to cause confusion in the future as the standards change.
I agree.
Raised my hand is because with all due respect to all of you, you're putting me to sleep.
I know.
It's noon. And we've been talking now for more than forty five or fifty minutes, and we haven't even gotten off of page one of the memorandum. And all we're talking about are some definitions and we're never going to get anywhere.
Well said, Paul.
Long and talk about what we need to talk about, which is, which is our bylaw. And maybe, maybe a, a, a larger bird's eye view of where we want to go. Um, in instead of focusing in on the memorandum, maybe we should be focusing in on the, on the draft bylaw.
Well.
Be here all day.
They correlate together pretty well.
I I think, Paul, that we should focus on the memorandum because the bylaw falls out of the policy objectives in the in the memorandum. So I think if you, if you follow the categories in the memorandum and you make decisions on those categories, I think it's easier to see it that way. Um, and then I can make the adjustments in the bylaw.
That's exactly why I was going through it this way for exactly the way it's laid out. I will say to to Jean's point that um I agree that we shouldn't be regulating capacity. We should be regulating size. And I think that as Artie has said, we can generate more capacity with a smaller footprint. I don't think that I want to for a small, for a small, and I'm not sure it would pass a town meeting, that I would um start at twenty five hundred square feet for a small mounted and that and and I uh I would think that for a small mounted, I would uh have it like our other towns do at seventeen fifty because that would still generate yeah, you know, more than, you know, as more than what Dewar's uh engineers have said will produce in capacity. No, we're not regulating capacity. But if the concept is true that we can produce more with a smaller footprint, I don't know why we would increase this. Particularly in.
What we need for, yeah, because what we need for a footprint now to match up with what the regulations have changed for net metering is the twenty five hundred script.
So why don't we do this? Can we?
Can I say something? I I think it's important to kind of look at this in the context of why we have these thresholds at these different levels. So for the small, it's set at seventeen fifty. And everything above that to up to on the medium up to forty thousand is for the medium. And the threshold is set so that the small can happen as of right without a site plan approval, the large can happen with a site plan approval. So it's not that you can't have the medium, excuse me, the medium. It's not that you can't have the median, Artie, it's just that as the size gets bigger, it 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 gets a bigger look. And that was the reason, that's kind of how it's structured. So you have the small to seventeen fifty, and then you have the medium, it's something that's larger than seventeen fifty up to forty thousand, but the medium triggers a a a stronger look than just an as of right permit through the building department.
So a site plan reviewer of special permit?
It's a site plan review. So in the, so that in a, in a residential district, you could have, you could just, you know, as of right, um, you could do a small scale, um, which would be seventeen fifty or less, but anything above that's going to, you know, up to the forty thousand is going to trigger a site plan approval.
So that's the question for you, Artie. What's the size that we're comfortable with, that we should be comfortable with? For allowing it without any, without any site plan review?
Well, okay, so certainly valid, all valid questions. So certainly, so later in these, later in the memorandum, certainly in the bylaw, there's going to be some statements about the the setback from the property lines and statements. Uh, so I believe something should be added as far as um, um, some type of, I use the word screening. If it's depending on the distance to the, distance to the property line, there should be screening. There has to be some type of screening. It doesn't matter what size system it is, period. A certain distance from the property line, there has to be screen. Is that's related to the look? Again, related to the system size, there aren't that many properties in town, which which goes, which can go both ways that necessarily ever going to, that will have a yard big enough for a solar system of twenty five hundred square feet because of all the setbacks, percentages and so forth. So.
All the more reason to keep it at seventeen fifty. So we can get more of these
It can go.
On on the smaller lots by right.
That that doesn't change, that doesn't change. If that doesn't change, if you put this at twenty five hundred, that will not change what can go in a small lot at all. There's no effect on a small lot whatsoever. None.
But I think what it changes is when is a site plan triggered? So, so you know, I think the question is, how big a system do you want to allow as of right? Theoretically, and how big is, and at what point in time do you um do you want to have a more robust review?
From a, from a logical standpoint, from the net metering policy is what, what, what that means as far as the value of energy. The logical comparison is to, I understand things will change in time efficiencies, the logical comparison is twenty five hundred script. If that matches up more, that correlates with the climate action plan, what we're trying to do and what's possible. And these larger houses with larger lots will have larger systems and if they want a ground mount and if they have a space, this, that's what they can go up to to try to meet some of their needs. It won't meet their needs, not likely. But it'll need a larger percentage of these than just twenty five hundred script. There's still going to be regulation, we have to put in visuals.
I recognize that Jean has her hand up, but Artie is raising a point that I think gets to the question that we're trying to discuss here because Artie is saying that we should have a requirement of screening between the um uh the, the, the system and the, and the property line. And if we're going to require screening, can we do that on an as of right situation? Where I guess we're saying to the building, to the building commissioner, you decide whether they've presented sufficient screening to meet our bylaw.
Right.
Require a site plan review? We, we, we got to get back to what, what are we doing on the planning board? And what we're doing on the planning board is deciding how things are going to look on the pro, on various properties. It's not a question of generating a certain amount of power. It's a question of we're regulating how the systems will look around the town so that we are presenting the, 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 um, uh, the, the look and the feel and the architectural integrity of the town in the way that um, people who live in Needham want to present it. And we're not, we're not regulating the output. We're regulating
That's right.
Land use.
Jean?
Uh, yeah, this may have been discussed and I just missed it if I did, I'm sorry, but um that this seems to be a discrepancy between uh in the um memorandum between D and E. Where D says it's a ground, it defines as ground mounted solar energy system that occupies one thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet. Then E says a ground mounted solar energy system that occupies more than one thousand five hundred.
That was my, that was a typo. I I failed, um, I made an adjustment from the last time. The last time we were looking at fifteen hundred and I failed to make it in.
Okay, so E should be seventeen fifty. Okay.
E should be seventeen fifty.
Okay, great.
Or twenty five hundred, if that's what, you know, Artie's recommending that we increase it to twenty five hundred. But again, I thought it was a question of the size of the unit and whether we want to require site plan review.
Right, I, I think I'm, uh, and screening comes up in other parts of this draft bylaw. I uh I when I look at different types of districts, I if I think about it, for instance, in a residential context, and in particular in a single family districts, uh, in SRB, which is the vast majority of our um of our uh properties, uh, I residential properties that are not multifamily, um, I think homes are generating power already for, you know, that that cover a substantial amount of their um of their capacity, you know, of their consumption just by having panels on their house or their uh garage or both. So if they have another area that's one thousand seven hundred, it's almost, it's like, uh, what is that? Uh, a hundred uh, a hundred feet by seventeen feet?
Yeah, but let's, let's be, let's be practical, let's be practical though. Any type of single residence B certainly. I mean, they'll, they'll be lucky to fit a uh three hundred fifty square foot system, probably something like that. Is not only do you have setbacks to the property line, you're gonna have setbacks to the house. Is this is a structure, it can't be within a certain distance of the house. There's going to be setbacks on the property line. So there's, there's already going to be, there's already a lot of restrictions, percentage of percentage of density on the land. There's a lot of restrictions that it can condense this anyway on single residence A and B. But then they'll, so B, B, B won't even remotely approach even seventeen hundred square feet, won't even approach foreigners where you probably. So this is really talking about properties in the, you know, large, larger, larger lots, one acre, two acre lots.
So I, I, I understand, I understand that, but I think that um just to finish my, just to finish my point, that there, that there are some, there, that there are some larger, single family lots in SRB. I I'm inclined at this point, until I hear more from Justin in our engineering department, um if people are generating almost their entire consumption just by panels on their house or uh and or uh their garage, uh you know, I, I don't see a need to go to allow it um a larger footprint in SRB uh by by right, um, because of the additional impacts that you get from a larger system. Yes, it's true, as an accessory structure, I think, Lee and Alex, the setback is ten feet from the house, but it's like five feet, I think, from the, from the sides and the rear. So you're going to put this thing right up next to your neighbor's thing, although we'll talk about screening later, it's still going to have a bigger impact.
No, I don't think it should be allowed five feet from the property line.
Well, you've just said that it would be allowed at the other setbacks, so.
Yeah, but you're changing the setback.
I'm not, I'm not saying five feet. I thought somewhere in here, I thought there was something in here that pushed it back, you know, but I don't want these things with five feet from so much property line.
Then we'll deal with step back later.
Say that, that it's an accessory structure and that's, it's the, it's the uh uh requirements that that the bylaw provides for accessory structures, which is five feet.
Well, depends on height. I think it depends on how high the accessory structure is. That's true.
But Artie's point is, he thinks it should be set back farther than five feet.
Yes.
I don't think five feet.
Okay, so we'll have to come to setbacks, uh, you know, after, but we, to Paul's point, it's well afternoon and we haven't even resolved our definitions. So can we, can we all agree to this so we can move forward to other things? Because the, to, you know, Natasha, to your point, what we see is uh is a mix from uh the, uh, the other towns, except to say the majority of these other towns that have done, you know, that have defined small, medium and large are, you know, are doing it in, you know, based on the seven, one thousand seven hundred and fifty. And then uh uh as small and then above that, less than forty thousand square feet uh, you know, is medium. I, I, you know, I'd like to just check in with Justin on that, see what.
I, I think that's the tweaking, Adam. I think that's what, I mean, I think we should just understand, like, you know.
Fine.
Yeah, I think that's the tweaking. Get information from Justin. Everybody do a little more research and then we can come back to it because I think we, I think big picture for me is understanding what requires site plan review, what requires special permit, what's as of right? Right, like, and then um the setbacks, do we want to keep the setbacks that are consistent with a district or do we want to impose different ones for land use, right? Like the big picture things. And then within that, we can do a little more research and then tweak them more. I just think that would be more helpful for me at least to think about it globally because it's all intertwined. But I, I don't know. I mean, if people want to go line by, item by line item, we can do that too. Whatever everyone feels is the best way to go through it.
Jean, is your head?
We started, we started the discussion of this topic by talk, by asking whether there should be a landscaping requirement for um ground mounted solar that is to be allowed by right um in our residential districts. Um, and uh I don't think that's a, a good idea because with outside plan review, you're asking some staff person to determine the adequacy of landscaping and uh, you know, how is it even going to be monitored over the years on on residential lots? Um, I think we should focus on setback. And I was looking in our zoning bylaw to find the provision having to do with accessory structures. But I think if we just have a careful um uh phrase or amendment to the section that has to do a setback for accessory structures um to to require that uh ground mounted, um, it should have a, uh either the same setback as for principal structures or or a, a particular setback that's longer than five feet.
Yeah, I read that somewhere, but then maybe that was, I read that somewhere, but principal structure, but maybe that was another town with the setbacks.
Yeah, is it truly that the way it's currently worded, this, this would be considered a close and accessory structure and therefore it would be required to be set back only five feet in single family residents?
I think that the, the parking canopy I kept at the accessory structure setback and that for all other ones, it was the district level setback.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, that's where I read it. Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so a parking canopy, I assume, I mean, presently, I think on single family residences, you can park right up to the lot line. Uh, but the canopy, a canopy like that, if you wanted to put a canopy over your parking area. Uh, but the canopy, a canopy like that, if you wanted to put a canopy over your parking area or in your single family lot, um, you, you, you would have to make sure that's an accessory structure.
Right, that's how, so I treated that as an accessory structure, almost like the garage was an accessory structure, so I basically said that the if you put, you know, a canopy over your parking area, that that would be treated as an accessory structure, but that the stuff, but that the, that the ground mounted would need to meet the dimensional requirements for the district.
Mm-hmm, so, uh, we, if we're comfortable that, uh, somebody a canopy over their parking area on a residence.
Gene, stop.
Enough, okay.
Just because, well, we'll come back to you, Gene, but Paul had a question to understand.
I don't, I don't understand that definitionally. What's the reg- in a single family residence district? How, how is the setback different than accessory structure? Are you saying that, that, that?
Ground mounted systems would meet this, would need to meet the definition for a structure, a building in that, in the, in the, in the district.
So a small ground mounted solar energy system is not an accessory structure, it's a, it's a.
Well, it's an express, it's an accessory use.
It's an accessory use, but not an accessory structure.
Right, and that the setback for the ground mounted system would, would be the same as, as it is for a dwelling. But the setback for a canopy, um, a parking canopy would be treated like an accessory structure, like a garage.
Okay. All right, that sounds reasonable to me.
And that's how, and that's based on, you know, uh, doers' construction too, I think.
Okay, so I think we're, we're okay then with that concept?
But we, but it does go back to the size of the thing because uh, which goes back to the definition, right? Like, at what point? And how do we manage screening? You know, if you've got, you know, if, like, if you've got something in, at, at, uh, uh, Wingate, uh, and they wanna be able to, for a ground mounted, take advantage of ground mounted on some of their op- you know, in some of their open space. Uh, you know, se- separate from a canopy over their parking lot. Uh, you know, or if you take another site like, um, uh, if you take another site like, uh, North Hill, which has more land than Wingate does. Um, or if you take Paul's backyard, Paul, you know, how many times have you mentioned how upset you are with a neighbor behind you that has this huge, you know, that has this structure above their fence? Like it has the size, I see Natasha, I'll come to you in a second. You know, size matters and it has an impact. And I think that there is a point where we should probably with a site plan review at structures that are over one thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet or uses over seven hundred, uh, one thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet, that's where we should start to regulate, uh, you know, the, things like landscaping and screening, which we do talk about for ground mounted, you know, as, as having some screening.
Let, let me simplify it, is the fact is that if I'm, if I'm, um, I mean, obviously, you know, I have less issues than, than, you know, probably most people do, but the fact is that, um, if I'm a neighbor, and if I'm a neighbor and a, and a guy puts a solar system up between my house and his, ten feet setback, I'm gonna want, I'm gonna want, I'm gonna want something, I'm gonna want some type of arborist or something. It's not that there's anything wrong with that. Um, but it, but it's a little different than looking at a building, and so.
That, that some of, some of the other groups say, um, some of the other towns say that, like about landscaping and things like that.
Vegetation and stuff, may, maybe every ground mount should be on the site plan review. Maybe, maybe everyone, is the fact is that. Yeah, even small, these, well, I mean, the, the, the fact is, Adam, that, no, well, I mean, the fact is, we're talking about, you know, we're getting, okay, so related to visuals, I can use phrase, we're getting hung up on the seventeen hundred and fifty or twenty frame square, or twenty-five frame square feet, the fact is that very few systems in town will ever be that size. And, and any system that's in a, a residential B or even A area, that's ten feet, twelve feet from the property line. Personally, I, I want something visually between my, that and my neighbors', neighbors'. Good neighbors would probably do that anyway, I've had that happen with some ground mount systems. But the fact is, maybe every system, every ground mount should be a site surgery review related to that.
Paul? Okay, so if we've got a, um, uh, a small scale, ground mounted, um, which is gonna require in single residence B, uh, a ten foot setback and we have a requirement for, um, uh, landscaping. Um, and we classify it as a minor site plan review, a minor project site plan review. Then instead of going through the full site plan review procedure, it requires the building commissioner before issuing the building permit to send it to the planning board for our review to make recommendations to the building commissioner. Um, where we can look at it and say, uh, our recommendation is that you require more more landscaping than is shown here or something like that, but, but does that, does that do the trick? To, to make it, to make it a minor project site plan review for that kind of a situation.
One of the things we have not, I'll, I seen Natasha, I'll come to you in a second. It, uh, you know, one of the challenges that I saw in, in what we have in front of us is that we have not defined a distinction between major and minor. That was one of the points I wanted to come up with, so I'm glad you raised that, Natasha.
I just think that, again, before we go to setbacks, we have to talk broadly about land use, right? So, we, I mean, that's, we have to decide if I'm just gonna.
What do you mean by that? We, we are talking about this.
No, you're talking about setbacks, that's what Gene was talking about. So, um, I guess what I'm saying is I'm just gonna give you a couple of examples. We can do building mounted solar energy systems and small scale energy systems are permitted by right across all zoning districts. Permitted as principal use, permitted as an accessory use, provided it is a, a use or structure that is customary and incidental to a permitted principal user structure. And the other one is, then it's canopy and large scale permitted as of right under site plan review across all zoning districts. Permitted as a principal use, permitted as an accessory use, provided it is a user structure that is customary and incidental to a permitted principal user structure. So, every, every town has a different land use. Some, some actually go through roof mounted installations and ground mounted installations for land use. Some go through, um, uh, roof mounted and large scale solar. Others go through, um, residential use regulations, non-residential and technology and business districts. And another one goes through, uh, roof residential and non-residential, so we need to figure out. And I think Lee proposed one, but I just wanna make sure that we're all on the same page about the land use and then the site coverage and then the setback and then the high regulation.
At this re- I'm gonna say something here, I um, it's twelve thirty. We have other items in our agenda, this meeting was supposed to go until one. And we can't even figure out a way to start this conversation. So I, you know, I honestly, at this point, don't know how, if we proceed this way and we have, and we can't even agree on an organizing principle to have a discussion. How are we gonna get this done in time for May? I just think we're not ready.
That's not true at all, not true at all.
Yeah, I disagree. I think we have to have a strategy and I think the strategy has to be, we have to have a general idea of what we want and then we can create each and, and then tweak each one. So is it, is what Lee wrote the right way, the basic requirements?
The memo.
Right, but we've never talked about it.
We're, the purpose of this conversa- the way Lee has laid this out, to me, has been very clear. The memo identifies all of the questions of the, uh, the, all, all of each of the individual elements that inform our policy on solar. It talks about land use. It talks about.
Right, but are we in agreement with it?
What's that?
Are we in agreement with the strategy? I think I, we need to just all agree on the strategy for each section and then the tweaks will, will get recommendations from Lee, but I feel like we're going straight into like a number and not the strategy of the entire thing.
Where, 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 where's the strategy? Where do we need to adjust the strategy, Natasha?
For, for me, it's like, okay, so the basic requirements is that we're doing by roof mounted residential and non-residential um, and historic district, right? Is that, is, is that the way we wanna do it?
Yes, I, I think I structured it, so basically the roof mounted was allowed as of right in all districts. And then I made a differentiation on, um, on small scale um, and medium scale in terms of what the standards would be in residential districts versus non-residential districts.
But for ground mounted?
For ground mounted, so that for ground mounted in, um, so roof mounted was allowed as of right in all districts. And then for residential districts, um, I think I said that you could have a small scale, um, system or a canopy um, as of right in a rear or a side yard. Um, and that you could have the medium scale, um, also in a side or a rear yard, but that would require more review, um, through a site plan process. That was kind of, that was the land use decision for residential. And then the question is, you know, you, you, yes, do you want to? I mean, do you want to, for example, enable, um, a ground mounted system in a front yard, maybe through a special permit process? Or do you feel comfortable with just only requiring that it can happen in a side or a rear yard? Um, and then for the non-residential districts, um, I think, what did I do here? Um, I think small scale was allowed as of right, um, also in, um, rear and in, inside yards. Um, medium scale, um, um, was allowed, I think, through, um.
By right by special per- by right by site plan.
By, by, by right with a site plan approval, and then I said that, um, the same regulations would apply in residential uses for exempt uses as as related to non-residential districts.
So, so I, I mean, I'm.
This Natasha's li- is laid out, Artie is suggesting
So, is that?
That, that we add to what, uh, Lee has just laid out two additional components, and I see, Paul, you had your hand up and before Paul, uh, Gene, you had your hand up. And I'll come to you in a second, but just to give context to this, in addition to those elements that Lee has just laid out, uh, which is, you know, in our memorandum, uh, uh, is pole mounted? We would have a fourth category for pole mounted solar. And we'd have to look at that by size, small pole, medium pole, large pole and wall pole. Uh, and, and then, uh, and then a fifth category is, uh, is uh, roof mounted solar canopy. So, so we've talked about.
But no, those are already here, that's a roofs, roof mounted solar energy systems is a.
No, a can- solar canopy on a roof is different than attaching a solar panel to a roof, to the roof. Do you understand the difference? A canopy.
I understand the difference, I think there's a roof mounted solar energy and then the non-residential districts. They have ground mounted, so what you're saying is there's no roof mounted for non-residential districts.
And there's no canopy, there's no canopy.
And no canopy in general, okay.
No canopy in general.
Okay.
So we would now have five different types of solar that we would be regulating, and at this point, we can't even figure out our way you know, into a box with three elements of regulation. Uh, Gene?
Yeah, I, I, I wanna just say something about parking canopies on residential lots. Um, at first I thought, oh no, we need to have them set back just the same way as, um, ground mounted, but on second thought, it's like a garage, why is it any different from a garage? So, uh, if, i- i- since the, um, ground mounted, as Lee said, has a required setback the same as the house, not a, accessory dwelling, uh, accessory, uh, structure. I'm fine with it, a- and, um, uh, in general, I only have one other comment regarding the entire thing. I think our staff did a terrific job and, um, I, I I don't, I would, it would be a shame to just lay this down. Um, but I can talk about my other issue later, it has to do with landscaping requirements for commercial parking lots.
Thank you. We'll come, we'll come to that if we can get our, if we can make some progress, uh, Paul?
Okay, first, I'd like to go back to something that Gene raised very early on, which is, I think that, um, for, for everything that Lee just laid out, I agree with it, but I, I wanna go back to Gene's point that what Lee is talking about for residential districts should be limited to single residence A, single residence B and general residence. And we, we put, um, uh, we put all of the other residential districts, the multifamily and whatever other re- residential districts we have with the non-residential districts for all of those requirements.
Yeah, and of course, rural residents would, would be the same as, uh, per, as, uh,
I think, I think that the roof mounted canopies and the building canopies should be limited to, to the non-residential districts. I don't.
I agree.
Yep.
Should it be, should it be limited to like the New England Business Center? I mean, do you want them in Needham Center? I mean, do you wanna look at it more?
Well, certainly, certainly a roof mounted canopy.
Not, the canopy.
A canopy, I think would be fine in, in the center of town and the heights. I think that a a total building canopy, I agree with you, perhaps we should limit that to the, to the New England Business Center.
I agree.
Uh, possibly mixed use one twenty-eight, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, I think, yeah, I agree.
Um, so, and now my question for Artie is, what about the pole mounted? Should that be? In the single residence districts?
Yeah, pole mounted might, might very well fall into the same same category or same definitions or restrictions as a ground mounted. It may very well fit into that, because ground mounted, we're limiting to ten feet in height, pole mounted, we probably will do the same thing. Um, um, the ground mounted, we're going to a ten, ten foot setback. The only thing, the only place there may be a difference is pole mounted is visually different. We may allow the, I can see allowing, potentially allowing the pole mounted to be by the property line. But, but we may not need to, so pole mounted may be the exact same thing as a ground mount, just making sure we're actually stating it, whole mount, ground mount. Is they are. Yeah, it may be the same, same per, same, same descriptions.
Are, are the utilities underground in both instances?
Yes, yes, they are.
Okay.
Here, I'm gonna just say something, I in every way want to advance meaningful climate action through our zoning plan, and I think we can do that at town meeting. When we're dealing with, uh, our residential districts and when we're dealing with our commercial districts for, uh, roof mounted and ground mounted and canopies over parking lots. I think this discussion has already proved to be complicated on those three elements just in and of itself. I personally would prefer, but I'll support the will of the board that we deal with pole mounted and, uh, um, uh, uh, roof mounted canopies afterwards, like what we've been dealing with, with ADUs. Initially, I think, Gene, you know, the planning board may have wanted to go very liberal. But in order to get its first, uh, bite at the apple, ultimately, in fact, even that was, was a challenge. Ultimately, in fact, even that was, was a challenge. It was limited to, um. You know, attached, no detached, and it was limited to for family members only. And I don't think that we can go after the whole apple in the moment. I think a better strategy is to focus on these three things. And that's what I recommend. Paul?
I think that a roof mounted canopy. In, um.
New England Business Center?
New England Business Center and possibly mixed use one twenty-eight. Wouldn't, would, wouldn't be objected to at town meeting.
I'm not sure that we even need regulation for that. If we already allow.
Yes, well, we do because of potentially for height. Although, although it's, although technically, although technically it could be considered a mechanical.
Yes, exactly. But. I, 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 I think, Paul, I, I understand what you're saying. I don't disagree. I think, I think that if there's a place where it could be. The one place in town where it potentially could be. Except, you know, we do have, you know, residents in the Kendrick. And we do have residents in, um, uh, uh, Charles River Landing.
Yeah. I, I, I've got no problem with, with roof mounted canopies on, on those buildings.
I don't have a problem with them on that, on, on those buildings either. But if there's a building next door and it obstructs a view because you've got an additional twenty-five feet of height. The residents of those buildings.
Why are you going up twenty-five? Why are you going up twenty-five feet? Like you're on twenty-five feet. Those, those, those.
My point is, the, that, that's, you know, the substantive point of my comment. Is that when you increase as a result of having a canopy over another building, it's necessarily going to have a significant impact. Uh, on the residents nearby.
So Adam, this is the detail of it, right? So maybe we should go into dimensional requirements and just get big picture of lot coverage and big picture.
First. To your point about land use. Are we going to now also regulate pole mounted? And or, uh, uh, these other, uh, and, and roof mounted canopies.
Adam, I have my hand up for.
Yes, I know.
Reason now to, to, to move along. I would like to suggest that we schedule another special meeting. For sometime in, you know, mid, early, early, mid-December. And continue, and continue this discussion then.
I agree.
Yeah, I think, I think those items, like the, the items that are outstanding and the different and six point two point one. We need, we need to talk about more, but what I was trying to get to is if, if we could have gotten into each individual category and just big picture. Understand where we are, then we can start tweaking all of them. So I agree with what you're saying that we need to review all of that later.
We haven't resolved a thing yet. As it is Natasha, we.
Well, we did resolve something in my mind, the basic requirements of roof mounted solar energy systems in residential districts and non-residential districts. That seems to, to be something that we can tweak. Um, in historic district, we all agree on that. Now the questions is the, the pole and then the roof canopy. And, um, and creating, uh, two residential districts, right? Do we do single family versus multifamily? Is that right or?
Well, we also have to resolve. We also have to resolve, you know, the definitions.
Right, then the definitions is, is like also tweaking these definitions to make sure it aligns with all this other stuff. I just feel like if we go through the big picture first and then go back and tweak all of them because they're all intertwined. It's easier for us to be able to absorb and give good feedback.
I think we, I can, I think we can eliminate the issue related to pole mounted because it'll probably just fit. Exactly what's going on with ground mounted. It'll probably just be the exact same thing. And as a certain height setback, it'll probably be the exact same thing.
Adam, maybe a, a suggestion here would be for me to kind of work with Natasha and come back at this next meeting. And maybe Natasha and I can help kind of frame this conversation in more of a conceptual way, um.
I intended for us to do this in our, you know, in our chair vice chair, which I, which I'd like to do. I think it'll be, I think that would be great and effective. So let's talk offline about a time we can do that. And then let's talk now about, uh, when we can meet again as a board. To, uh, continue this discussion. If you want to do it on the week of the, uh, twenty-seventh. We don't currently have a meeting on, uh, Tuesday, the twenty-eighth. We do have a meeting on the fifth. I, uh, this is important for me. I'm, I'm certainly. Ready, willing and able to meet on the twenty-eighth to discuss this. And I think we should devote two hours just to solar.
Are people willing to meet during the day on Zoom?
I can do that.
Which day again?
Twenty-eighth.
What day?
November twenty-eighth. Is that what we're talking about?
I would, I would really rather meet at night because.
Yeah.
Too, too much time away from my day job, literally.
Yeah, I could do a night meeting on that day, the twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth.
Also.
Yeah.
We need to have like a strategy really because we're going to go around in circles if we don't have.
That's why we're going to have that chair vice chair and we'll schedule that offline.
I would like, I would like to make a statement though related to that, and that is that. Um, from the beginning, this is not personal. Um, I know you, you've, you've had some concerns about the solar canopies over buildings. And whether it can be passed me to town meeting, and I can appreciate that, but. This, right now, we're talking about what we, what we are discussing, what we, what we bring to our, to our public meetings. And what we fully flush out to make sure what's going on. I see no concern, I see no reason to withhold or to negate that possibility. When I can see, I can see a pathway through. So I would not like to see that trying to be curtailed in our public, going to our public meetings for these solar, solar canopies over buildings.
I, I hear you. It's a good point. I, I think what you've said before is. You're willing to punt on pole mounted for now.
No, no, that's what I said. No, no, pole mounted would be the same thing as ground mounted. It, it'll just be, it'll be. It'll be lumped together.
Same, Artie is saying the same setback requirements, the same height requirements.
And matter of fact, we can just say ground mounted, pole mounted, I have the same thing. Whatever. No, I'm not fucking on to the same thing.
Okay, okay. So I appreciate the clarification. Thanks for the clarification. We'll have to continue, we'll have to continue to have that conversation.
We have a meeting on Tuesday night, the twenty-eighth.
Can we meet by Zoom? I have another commitments. Are, are people okay meeting on, on, by Zoom on Tuesday night?
That's fine.
I'm fine. That means that we would, uh, we, you know. I do, I guess, given that next week is Thanksgiving. Right, Natasha.
Can't be next week, yeah.
I, 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 I will make my, this is a priority for me. I will make myself available anytime. If you want to meet on Thursday, the twenty-third. At two o'clock for two, you know, as a chair vice chair, I'll do it. It's important.
On Thanksgiving Day. I love you, Adam, but no.
Have to remember Natasha, Adam is Canadian. He doesn't recognize.
Paul, to your point, I've already made three soups.
Yeah, Adam, Target isn't even opening on Thanksgiving now, and, and that's, that's wow, that's a big.
Are we, we're talking about seven PM, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, seven PM, we'll do that. And then Lee. If, uh, you'll reach out to Natasha and I to figure out a time before Thursday. Uh, uh, and otherwise, uh, we'll have to do it Monday or during the day on the twenty-eighth, but we'll deal with that. It's now almost one o'clock. Um. And. Do people still have time to go through these, uh, four pages of preliminary? Conditions?
I am, yes.
I have to be off at one o'clock because I have another meeting, but I can stay as long as that.
So.
Well, why don't we let Natasha make whatever points she wants to make, uh, early on.
Yeah, I, I like that idea. Thanks for mentioning that, Gina. And I think I'm gonna have.
Let me find it. If you want to get started and I can.
I think I'm gonna have to close the meeting at one thirty. Uh. So. So Natasha, do you want to start with? Any conditions, A, that, uh, that Lee has identified? Uh, they, or are there other, let me ask you the first question. Uh, do you have any comments or conditions that you want to add that are not currently part of this?
I had a couple of questions, but I'm looking for them. So why don't you get started and I will find them in a second.
Okay.
Because I put them aside.
Just generally speaking to the rest of my colleagues. Do any of my colleagues, just raise of hand, have any conditions they'd like to add? Uh, that are either A, not part of our standard things and B, not specifically included in these, uh, notes that Lee has prepared.
Does a minor clarification count, Adam?
Uh, no, no, that would be different. That's different. But Gene, it's, you have some additional conditions that you'd like to add that are not part of this.
Um, I, I don't know if you call it an additional condition, but, um, I have a concern about the wording of a condition. Um, and, and its impact and how it should be stricter or differently worded.
I'm just, I just want to know if there's, uh, like, that's like Artie's earlier point. I just want to know if there's anything else that we have not catalogued.
I just like, like Gene, I just, I just have some comments about the individual things that are on Lee's. Okay. Uh, suggestion.
Okay, I also want to be mindful. There are some of these, there are a couple of instances. Where we have these conditions which are, which I worry may not be permissible. Uh, under site plan review where we may, where they're contingent on future determinations. And town council has, you know, has called that out before. And, uh, you know, I, so I want to bring.
He's called that out for Dover amendment. I don't know if that applies to this, which is not Dover amendment.
For exactly the reason why I want his guidance.
Yep.
On, you know, uh, before we can, you know, move to the next round.
Yeah, didn't we have something related to the, uh, um. Mayor Warren of this country where we had some conditions, but if something happened, we would come back and change them. Isn't that similar thing?
Yeah, I don't think that that was, I don't think that was legally permissible.
Well, I don't think that was site plan review. I think that was special permit.
Uh, you might be right about that because that use is by special permit and the future condition related to, I think, like. Security, effectively.
Yeah.
So. Um. Okay, so have you been able to find? Your comments?
Yeah, my, my two comments are, and I, one comment is about the pedestrian access. So the pedestrian building access, meaning entrances to the building, Lee, is that what?
Yes, that's what I meant.
Two locations, um, along Highland Avenue is shown on the plan. So that's the new, the new one that they just did, right? Right, um, a universal act, you know, or accessible pedestrian building. Because, because it really has, because that they, they have to do the ramp. Right at the entrance.
Okay, what, where is that condition at?
On page three.
Okay, fine. So you want a universal access?
Um, yeah, to the pedestrian, whatever, the universal. Um, a pedestrian, universal building access shall be provided at two locations along Highland Avenue as shown on the plan. At one closer to Arbor Street and the other at the corner of Cross. So I, I'm just trying to figure out, there's another one, there's another pedestrian.
I, I.
To Arbor Street?
Yeah, I, what you're basically saying is you thought that there was one. I only saw one in their plan. I didn't see two entrances.
But I thought there was two.
I only saw one from, from on Highland, but then you have to go down that ramp and underneath the building. That's the other pedestrian access.
And they're both along Highland Avenue, right?
Um, it's on, on Highland Avenue, but it's underneath, yeah, and it goes underneath the bill, it goes down cross street, you know. Parallel to Cross and then underneath the building, right?
Right.
I don't understand, I'm.
There are two entrances to the building. You can, you know, you can do the front of the building.
So here, the, so here there's one entrance to the building on Highland Avenue.
Right, so you have this one and you have this one that goes like that and goes under the building and in.
As a pedestrian access, I see what you're saying.
Yeah. So I think it's another pedestrian access down, you know, at the corner of Highland and Cross. Um. Right, to, to, to enter the building at the underground level or something like that.
Okay.
Sorry, what? So what?
The reason I say universally accessible entrance is because both require ramps.
But they have, they have that installed.
I know, but I, I want to put a condition in here that acknowledges it. Because it's, it's on the plans and the drawings, but I want it to be a condition so that there can't be some. Modification to this in the future by just going in and getting a building permit. I want to make it clear that this, we, we, that this. Permit is, is dependent upon this dual access and that has to happen through a condition.
And more specifically that it's, you can do it by wheelchair or accessibility. It's universally accessible.
I, okay, I'll, I'll, I'll modify it.
So my, my thing about. My, the thing that, that occurs to me is. I want to be. They've provided this universally accessible access. Uh, you know, near the corner of Highland for pedestrian, uh, near the corner of Cross and Highland. And we've asked them to now do a second one. I just want to be very careful because at some point. I don't want this to become like a drop off and pickup. And we have to be very careful, uh.
We have a condition, Lee drafted a condition for that.
I know, we'll come to that, but it's, but it's, it's a concern. I don't know, I don't know if it's reasonable. To condition. That there be two universally accessible entrances.
So then there's one in the, in the Highland Avenue in the front of the building. The other one is through a parking lot. It's not. But it is an accessible way of getting into the building also, so. I, I don't see a problem with that. I, it's what they drew.
It's, I'm, all I'm doing is codifying what they proposed.
Um, I just have two more comments really quickly, Adam. The one is.
Go ahead.
Um, so Lee, number eighteen, I, I've just been through a project where, um. I mentioned that landscaping minimizes traffic noise and the, all the landscape architects told me that that's not true, so. I, I think that we, we can just say, um. I, I mean, it just limits, it just limits the views, you know, landscaping, number eighteen, landscaping needs to be added to the other side of Cross Street to limit. The impact, um, you know, and views or so I, I'm, I'm, you know, I defer to.
I was going to double check to see what they did and do it as a plan modification.
Yeah, because I always wrote on, on things that, that, that it minimizes traffic noise and I was corrected by all these landscape architects. Who are like, no, they have nothing to do with noise control at all. It's just visual.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and then the third, the third question, and I don't know if it's in here somewhere, but when we were doing, um, the Hillside School when I was on P P B C. We had a lot of complaints from, or not a lot, we had one complaint from one of the neighbors about their foundation. Um, you know, when, when they excavated. Um, and so I don't know if that's in anywhere in this about. Making sure, you know, I see coordinating with the neighbors and doing all that stuff, but, um. If people already have cracks in their foundations or they don't have cracks in their foundations and this because of the amount of work that there is there. I don't know if, if, if it's our job to do this, but I'm just bringing it up that it's not, okay.
I'm, I don't think I'm clear. What do you mean by that? To do what?
When you do excavation, you, you, there's, um, and there's any movement on the, at the ground plane. It causes cracks in people's foundations and, and so sometimes. The contractor goes around every building and photographs it to make sure that either that was there already. Or that if it was impacted by the construction, that the construction mitigates it. It's a big building with a lot of residential and other units around it. So I just wanted to make, I didn't know if we had any purview on this or not, but. I just wanted to bring it up because it happened during Hillside. Somebody was saying. I just wanted to bring it up because it happened during Hillside. Somebody was saying that there was, but we had, there were photographs that that crack already existed. They, you know, they sued the town or whatever.
Uh, let me check with.
Problem. We, we had that problem on that huge project near the Broad Meadow School.
Um, a big, per big project when you have smaller.
Right. Say that again, Alex.
Awkward.
That, that was blasting, that was with blasting, I think.
Well, whether, whatever it was, the neighbors, the neighbors were complaining that they were. You know, it was causing, it was causing damage to their housings from, from.
Right, and it could, it could do that.
I'm not sure that there's anything we can do about that, but I think.
Maybe there isn't. I just wanted to bring it up. Because of the proximity to all these residences.
Let me check with the building inspector and get back to you on that.
Okay. Those are all my, my only comments and I. I'll leave Paul and Jean to wordsmith it because they're better at that than I am.
I, I wasn't intending to have this like be final language. I was just trying to get the concepts, just trying to get the concepts out there to talk.
I think it's great. Thank you.
I appreciate final language. It saved me a lot of time.
Okay. Can I make my comments, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please, Paul. Go ahead.
Okay, so um. Paragraph one H. And this is wordsmithing, Lee, but you know.
Okay.
You say to the extent approved and desired by Mastod, I would change desired to, to allowed.
Okay.
And allowed by, by Mastod. Um.
Do we need the word, do we need the word approved, just allowed then?
Yeah, to, to the extent allowed by, by Mastod, do, do not block signs and pavement markings shall be provided. Um. My only experience with this is that we were able to put markings. At the entrance to the temple at one time, and it was the town that actually did that striping. It wasn't the private. The temple wasn't responsible for it. We went to the town and said, we'd like to have that striping so that people don't block. Don't block it and.
You paid for it or did the town pay for that?
The town paid for it. It was, you know, all that they did was they painted.
Well, they, they proposed to do it, so I was gonna let them do it.
Yeah, no, 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 that's, that, that's great. Um, then on L, one, one L, the snow accumulations. I would take out that last phrase where such accumulations would impede sidelines. I don't want to get into a discussion about whether or not it's impeding sidelines. They shall promptly, they shall promptly remove snow accumulations within the site triangles.
Okay.
Um, on the second page.
Hold on, can we go back? I just want to go back for a second, Paul, because I made a comment on one, uh, one H.
Okay.
The, the, that applicant shall adhere to all sign and pavement markings desired or approved. By Mass D O T. Is that another way of? Saying the same thing?
I said aloud instead of desired.
But.
Number required. Maybe that requires no work.
I mean, you, you know, they're gonna go to Mass D O T. And say, we want to put do not block signs and pavement markings.
Right, so then approve, so applicant shall adhere to all sign and pavement markings uh uh required and or approved by Mass D O T.
Required, I said aloud, required, okay.
Well, Jean, you've got your hand up.
I think what you're proposing is a completely different concept. Um.
That's why I'm raising.
That of course they would have to comply with any requirements of Mass D O T, but here we're saying. But even if best D O T does not require such a thing as do not block signs and pavement, we want it. As long as Master T is okay with it. That's different. That's your wording, Adam, doesn't seem to make it a requirement the way the current wording does as adjusted by Paul.
Would it change, Jean, if I said applicant shall adhere to all sign and pave, all sign and pavement markings? Approved by Mass D O T?
No.
Oh, no, that doesn't, no. No, how it, how it's written now, just what Paul said, how it's written now, just replacing approved and desired with the word allowed.
Yeah, we're gonna just take out. I think approve, we're just gonna, it'll be to the extent approved by Mass D O T.
Allowed, I, I, I think I was gonna say to the extent allowed by Masti, Mast D O T.
Allowed.
That's, I, I, I don't, I don't care about allowed versus approved. I also thought.
Yeah, we don't, we don't want to prove because it would probably take the mass D O T three, three, three years to go through their. Their process to actually get some, somebody to take responsibility to actually approve something.
Right, so I, what I was trying to do when, by saying all signs and pavement markings. Was to free us up so we're not restricted to the, you know, do not block.
Well, it could be all, it could be all signs and paving markings such as.
Wait, 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 we're talking about a specific place.
Talk about a specific one that they agreed to put the sign.
About across, at Cross Street and Mill Road.
Okay.
We want to have the markings on the road and a do not block sign. So that cars will stop. If there's a line of traffic because of the traffic light.
Right.
Cars will stop and allow these cars to come out of Cross Street.
Yep.
Or Mill Street and get into the line of traffic. Okay, that's all we're talking about.
I understand. I just thought to make it more global if we're dealing with other markings that they may want. Uh. Uh, you know, that Mass D O T may have some jurisdiction on, but I, I.
If Mass D O T has requirements that they obviously have, have to meet.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was gonna say.
Control over that.
I understand.
Um, there is something on page.
I have to jump off. I wanted to thank everyone. Thank.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good weekend.
Sorry to break in, but as long as we're talking about, there is a requirement on page three. Engineering conditions, number eleven. A separate mass D O T approval is required for any work for this section of Highland Avenue right of way. Uh, so. That's simply a fact. I don't know that we need to say it as a condition, but perhaps we do. But there it is. Is, is that what Adam was seeking?
All right, can you, I lost page three. I'm just pulling it up online. Uh. Uh.
Page three, item eleven, under engineering conditions.
Hold on one second, I'm not there. Oh, this was not. Lee, this was a separate email, right?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I'm talking about. Project notes for permit conditions that was for this meeting, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Just trying to find it on his computer. It was.
Between.
Came in yesterday.
Uh, just bear with me. For some reason, I'm missing page three of notes, so just let me pull this up and I'll be. I'm sorry. Uh, I have it here. Here it is. Yes, go ahead. Jean, what was your comment or question?
Well, that, that was my comment, that we already have the provision. On, on page three. Engineering conditions, number eleven, a separate mass D O T approval is required for any work for this section of Highland Avenue right of way. And I thought that was the kind of thing you were trying to insert. In um, item number one. Uh, H, and I think it's already covered later.
Thank you. Yeah, and I'm, and I'm more comfortable having it covered later instead of inserting it here.
So do you want to strike H completely?
I don't know.
Oh, no.
He's just pointing out that you're still gonna have to go to Mass D O T about.
For approval, not. Uh. For it to, for it to be allowed separately from approved.
What's done this sort of thing before, I remember um. You know, and Wing Gate on their exit, we've acquired cert, um, an, an extension of the mid, mid, mid barrier. Oh, but only if the D O T would allow it. There's nothing unusual about such a condition.
I understand. Thank you. Paul, you want to continue?
Yes, on page two. Um, item two B, a transportation, um, no, two C. The T M A shall facilitate a ride share matching program. Can we tell T M A what to do? Do we have jurisdiction over T M A in, in our?
That's what they're proposing.
Well, yeah.
Transportation management.
Want to make it a condition. And I don't, I don't know that we can have a condition where we're telling the T M A has to do something.
I think that's true. We don't have authority over the one twenty business.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
See, oh, yeah, no, I see.
You're right.
You know, A and B are fine. C, I think, should come out.
Right, you're right.
Um. Uh, D, um, to, to the extent available, ma- ma- maybe add that. I mean, I didn't, I didn't make the same comment for D. Um.
That's right. What is a guaranteed ride home program, by the way?
You know, actually, I don't, you know, they're gonna contract with, yeah. I, 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 let me, let me figure this out because they. You know, maybe they have to provide that if the one twenty eight business council doesn't do it. So let me just figure that out, okay? I'll put a question mark by it.
Now, in F. Special amenities shall be provided to discourage offsite trips. Um. That's not something that the landlord would be providing. Isn't that something that they, that, that we want to say that they will require the tenants? They will require their tenants to do this?
Yes.
Guys were provided to require.
Tenants shall be required to, all right. Tennis, like it should say, tennis shall be required to provide something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They did offer this.
In H, this is just a typo. You've got a, a uh, uh, a little superscript two there for some reason. I was looking. I was looking for the, for the footnote.
Yeah, I know.
That comes up twice. That comes up twice.
I was cutting and pasting maybe from documents and couldn't get rid of something under word. I don't know. Okay.
Item four. I have a suggestion here, possibly. On Cedar Street in Wellesley. As I'm heading towards Route nine. From um. From Needham. There were certain right turns. Off of Cedar Street. That you can, you can take the right turn and cut over and get onto Route nine. And bypass the traffic light. So they've got. They've got kind of no right turn signs during, during rush hour. Set like seven AM to nine AM, no right turn. Um. I'm. In item four, I'm just. Kind of suggesting that maybe they should talk to, to the police chief about. Have, actually having traffic controls. There that, that legally prevent people from going on to Mill Street. At cer- maybe during certain hours. Some, some way to do that.
Um.
But how do we know that that's? But that also, one second, Jean, doesn't by doing that? Prohibit? Other flow of traffic that may not be coming from this? Site?
You know, that's, that's kind of an issue. Um, I, I, I've, I've got a friend who's a psychiatrist who used to have an in-home office. In a street that was off of there. And um, he did, he, he did have to go back to the police department and say, you're preventing, you're, you're pulling over my patients. Who have an appointment to see me at eight o'clock in the morning. And they're not allowed to take the right turn. I, you know, we understand what you're trying to do. You're trying to prevent people from cutting through to Route nine. But you know, people have to get to my house.
Well, I could, could say, I could say something, no right turn, local traffic only during this time.
Yeah, local traffic only, some, 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 something like that, but, but you know, that gives, that gives the police the opportunity to actually ticket people.
Yeah, I agree.
If they're going.
It should be, it should be at Utica. Should be, should be at Utica also, not just Mills.
Well, but Mills, Mills was specific be, uh, because it's. Opposite Cross Street.
I understand.
Opposite, uh.
Cross. Cross.
I'm just suggesting that they, that they consult with the police department to see if there's something they can do.
Right.
Yeah.
But I'm not making it a condition here. I'm suggesting. That they consult with the police department.
I think that's reasonable, Jean.
Um, my, my comment is that, um, I think this is a general thing that's happening in the neighborhood. Because perhaps of confusion as people exit one twenty eight. Um, in which direction they want to go. I, I think it is confusing intersection. Um, to get onto Highland Avenue. And I don't think that this project would aggravate that. At all. I mean, is it a concern that people? Leaving the project would want to go? The most direct route to Hunting, um, to go south?
Yeah, that's the concern.
Yeah.
The concern is that the patients leaving. Leaving the doctor's offices and in this building. Instead of taking a turn onto Highland and then a right turn onto Hunting. Will cut through. Will go across.
Highland Avenue.
Straight across onto Mill Street. And go through this residential neighborhood where little kids are riding their bicycles on the sidewalks and in the street.
Uh, the, what I found when I did my own drive in that area was. It was, if it's like we've heard, it's challenging enough to get out on to Highland Avenue from Cross. You're gonna get free access on both east and westbound lanes on Highland Avenue simultaneously. Like at the same time, and then you've got enough distance. To jump into Mill Street? I.
It doesn't seem likely, yeah.
You're inviting accidents. There's no question about it, but that's what we're trying to prevent. We're trying to prevent.
I understand that, but. But I, I just don't, from the flow that I observed. To be able to get on the uh, E, uh.
To take a left turn onto Highland. That's what you're saying.
Well, yeah, like.
Turn off crossing onto Highland. You're right. It's very, it's very tricky during, during high traffic.
But to, to be able, no, to be able to go straight.
Yeah.
I'm not talking with the left turn. I actually had no problem making a left turn out of, uh, out of the driveway where um. Uh, where Simon and Sons is. Making a left turn out of Arbor and a left turn out of, uh, um. Cross. I waited the longest. I think I waited was about six seconds. But there is a natural break in the light between Webster and at Hunting and Gould. And uh, like I, I just didn't wait that long. But what, but it would be, so I didn't have asthma, and I did that at like four forty-five in the afternoon. We had to pick up. Pants for my father at five, so it was prime time peak traffic. And the other, although we can't rely on my ex, my experience, we have to rely on, you know, what G P I and, and what uh, their traffic engineer came up with, but. I just think that it's exceedingly difficult. To cross. Four lanes of traffic. To get from the site to Mills. There was just a natural disincentive for that. I agree with you that we should. You know, that I agree with you that they, you know, that they can consult with the police to figure out what the best. Way, what the best signage is and how to be able to enforce it with some enforcement mechanism.
Yeah.
And see what the police commissioner says.
Just, just, just to be clear, though, Utica has to be added to that because.
Yes.
It has to be, is that they, if they can't do Mills, they're gonna do Utica. Utica has to be added to it.
Jean?
Yeah, um, I want to have some condition just to respect our police chief's comment. Um, but the uh, condition, the way Paul had worded it, I think could be more effective.
Just consult with him about, about.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I, uh, so the condition is that they consult. The condition is not that there is a. I don't think that we have the power to prescribe something that the police chief hasn't said. To do.
Well, then maybe we should get that information from the police chief.
Well, we're, we're just asking him to consult.
Yeah, we're just asking, you know, I'm not even saying that it's a condition. I'm just making that recommendation that they consult with the police chief. That we go back to them and say, we're recommending that you consult with the police chief to see. To see if there's something we can do like, you, you know. to see if there's something we can do like, y- y- you know, ma- making it illegal, a ticketable offense to act, go on to Mill and, and to Utica during certain periods of the day.
You're saying that we should consult with the police chief before we finalize the conditions?
Developer. We're recommending that the developer consult with the police chief. We're not going to consult with the police chief. That's not our job.
That's all, all we're recommending that they consult, not any particular thing they have to do.
The possibility of finding a way to prevent people, to legally prevent people from going on to Mill Street and Utica Street.
And then they have to do it?
I'm just saying that I've seen places where they have made it illegal to go on to those streets during certain periods of time, and maybe they should consult with the police department and see if that's a possibility here. That they can make it like a no left turn, you know, a no.
We get that.
No entrance during certain periods of time.
Paul, we understand that, but what we're trying to get clarity on is, are you saying that that informs us a condition that will make?
No, I'm not making it a condition. I'm just suggesting that Lee, talk to the developer and tell him to talk to the police chief to see if they can do something about it.
Okay.
Not making it a condition.
So it would not be a condition.
No, it's not a condition.
Okay. Thank you for your clarity.
Possible way of handling the matter to, to help the neighbors. You know, get some satisfaction to, to avoid traffic going on there because then if there's something that they can do to make it illegal to do it, now neighbors can call the police department and say, somebody made the illegal right turn onto Mill Street and here's the plate number of the person who did it.
So would, would, to be clear, would condition number four be deleted?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's what I understand.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
I just have a, uh, a wording. You're missing some words in number eight on page three.
All right, can we go back to number five on two before we advance? Page two, number five. We talked about the patient drop offs uh, and where that occurs within the site. But then it comes up, no patient drop off pickup activity shall occur along the building entrances on Highland Avenue operations. Uh, so first of all, I, I'd like to get clarity on whether this was something that uh, that their traffic engineer in fact did suggest.
Yes, and they, and they agreed to it in writing.
Yeah. Matter of fact, that's, that's, they were saying that's the reason why they didn't put a ramp going into that only exit door initially is because they didn't want patients being dropped off on Highland Avenue.
I'm talking about, hold on one second. I see your, your hand up, Gene. Just give me a second. I understand this. Lee, you're specifically saying that they agreed to a condition that says no patient drop off activity shall occur along the building entrances. I'm making a distinction between a planned design to discourage that from what's actually worded as a condition.
They stated that they had come up with a design that would assure this, that the patient drop off would only occur in the parking area and that there would be no patient drop off anywhere else.
I'm not, I, I, I think we should just double check on that. I, I don't recall the AI saying that you know, saying that they can, that this will absolutely in every way prohibit.
No, but our, our condition ought to say that they're not allowed to do it because in case there's a violation, we need to be able to enforce it. And we can't have people dropping off on Highland Avenue. So I mean, the drop off, as they represented it in their parking study, is all going to happen in the drop.
Them, but understand, the town has required them to make an entrance on Highland Avenue.
Not for drop off. Has made a pedestrian access.
I, I, I understand it's a pedestrian access and that we're not, and that you can't drive up, physically go above the elevation grade on that ramp to get into the building and drop off like a foot in front of the building. But they've already provided a universally accessible pedestrian access uh, on Highland Avenue. We require them to provide a second one. The concern was discussed at the time that by doing that, we could invite people to draw inadvertently drop off and pick up on Highland Avenue. The car pulls over and I let my wife off or my son off and they jump up, you know, the stairs or if they're accessible, they go through the ramp system to get into the building.
Well, they should have signage that says you can't do that. I mean.
I agree with that. I agree that we should have a condition that says there shall be signs that they shouldn't install signs that say no drop off and pickup. I agree that there should be a sign, but I don't know that where the town has, has required this additional access, this additional entrance, that we have the authority to say that I, that it will in absolute terms prohibit anyone from doing that.
I think you can.
Well, to put it another way, Lee, to put it another way, they can't control what other people do.
Thank you.
So if other people are actually violating the sign and pulling over and dropping people off or picking them up there and they're in technically in violation of this special permit, what, what can we do about it? How can we enforce that? They've got no control over, over what other people are gonna do.
Maybe, maybe we want signage out there or something.
That's exactly what Adam said. We require signage that says no pickup and drop off.
I think that's the best we can require.
I agree with Adam.
I agree. Yeah.
And if I may, um, it's, it says now in, in condition number five, um, no patient drop off pickup activities shall occur along the building entrances. Um, if we're going to have that sentence continue to be there and I, with the reference to activities, I think, why not say that? Um, that's not controlling the individuals, that's controlling the, the tenants and their activities uh, shall occur, but along the building entrances on Highland Avenue operations. I get, is the word operations a mistake?
Yes.
Yeah, so delete that. And, uh, weren't we just talking about the fact that one of the new entrances is actually on Cross Street, the ramp?
I have to change that.
That needs to be reworded. Right. Okay.
So, Gene, what worries, what Paul and I are saying is we delete the sentence, no patient drop off pickup activities, et cetera, et cetera. And replace it with uh, developer, you know, is required to install a sign saying uh, no drop off pickup uh, at the location uh, on Highland Avenue that meets the, you know, the pedestrian entrance.
We want to say the same thing on Cross Street, Adam?
I thought Lee said she would reword it to include Cross Street. But on Highland Avenue, don't we, don't we have the difficulty of it being a DOT uh, highway and we can't necessarily require a sign to be put up on it? Is that the kind of thing DOT controls? I should think it would be.
It is.
So then I think to that point, to the, you know, to the extent allowed by Mass DOT.
Right.
Okay.
The rest of the language that I propose.
Are we talking about signages that's on the sidewalk side of these Highland Ave, where it's on the corner?
That's where you put it.
Sidewalk.
I think you need to. It's like you put, like you would, as Paul's saying, it's like, uh, uh, you know, a no parking sign that's right up on the sidewalk.
Well, people, people will ignore a no parking sign if they're really only doing a drop off. So it has to be.
Yeah, they will.
Maybe the sign is no stopping. Instead of no drop off or pickup, it's no stopping.
I like, I like, and I like the no drop off.
Whatever, the side.
Yeah.
Uh.
May I make one comment on, on just one B? It's, it's a, I think this is clarification. And one B, it says, you know, self-selection, so put this on there. It says two-way travel, two-way travel through Cross Street, Arbor Street connector to allow the drivers from either parking deck to exit onto Highland Ave. The fact is that now it should be, yeah, allow drivers from the lower parking deck to exit the Highland Ave. Uh, and, and then after the Arbor Road and from the upper level, you know, and from the upper level to exit onto Arbor Road, uh, to the level, uh, so. Uh, onto Highland Ave. And I think, I think, I think it needs to be, I think one, one of them, the, the.
I, I thought that the, that was discussed at great length at our.
No, no, it is.
And they preferred, they set that out as a possible, but they said they really would rather not do that. They think it would cause backups.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, am I misreading? Maybe I'm misreading this one. Sorry, maybe I'm misreading this.
Yeah, this, well, this was a self-selection alternative. I think I've accurately described it with that we decided to go with.
Yeah.
Okay, maybe I'm misreading it. Okay.
It would be, it would be good that they have their, you know, traffic engineer just review that.
Adam, you wanted to stop at one thirty. We've gone long, a lot longer than I really have time for. I just have one wording addition to paragraph eight for Lee.
Yeah.
Um, at the end, it says, well, one possible change will be the elimination of the lower level. I think you want to say the elimination of access from the lower level of the parking garage to Cross Street.
And, um, Paul, as long as you're still here and may I address that, the number eight, uh, just make sure.
Sorry, Paul, Paul, can you please repeat? So, um, so will be the elimination of, I'm sorry?
Right, at the, at, at the end of paragraph eight, where, where it says, well, one possible change will be the elimination of, and then you'd say the lower level of the parking garage. I think you want to say the elimination of access from the lower level of the parking garage to Cross Street.
Okay.
So.
And my comment, may I make my comment now before Paul leaves on this number eight? Um, I think it's, it's, it's weak as far as giving us the right if, um, if there are problems to impose a condition where it says one possible change will be the elimination. I think we have to make it very clear that we reserve the right to, uh, make, um, the elimination of the lower level of the parking garage to Cross Street a condition if these difficulties occur.
And this is where Adam wanted to check with Chris Heap as to whether or not we can even have this because this is a future condition.
So the post, you mean, that the idea of post occupancy, um, watching out what actually happens post occupancy? And then if there's an issue, impose, have a condition that we write up here, right here. If that happens, then this is a condition.
Right. Well, we've got it been the past, but maybe there's a different point of view now. So, uh, we can chat with Chris.
Lee, I want to make a point on that. Because something incorrect was done before does not mean that we ought to continue that practice. I want verification from town council on this, and I think on twenty-one, that we have, first of all, have the authority to allow these kinds of subsequent conditions. I don't think that we have, like Paul said, I don't think that we have the authority to do these kinds of things. I think that if there is, if the, I think that if there is a violation of our condition, one of the practices we've done before is you know, call them in for either a meeting or a formal hearing. And I think we have, and I think we have, you know, we spell out later in our general provisions and our decisions what the process is. But I don't, I'm not so comfortable with this until I hear from town council. So please check with town council on eight and twenty-one and the rest of this to get ver- verification from him on what of this is permissible. Yes, Gene?
Yes, and I think the issue is this. It has to be a specific thing that happens and a specific condition that we impose if the thing happens. I think the problem with, um, like, you know, the daycare and Central Avenue is that a post-construction study uh, was vague about what we might impose in the future. Um, and I think that is, uh, I agree that that is not something we can do. But if we got a specific problem, it happens, then the specific condition is X. Um, I would want especially to make sure with town council that that's what we're seeking advice on.
Okay.
Not the way this is worded now.
No, I understand what you're saying. You're saying that you're, that we reserve the right if X happens, I'll reward, reward the condition. You reserve the right if X happens to impose this condition Y.
What remedy? The, I think the question's a bit broader, or there are some additional questions. If there is um, cut through traffic. Theoretically, the only cut through traffic into Putnam is going to be as a result of this project. So I don't, you know, what remedies do, does the town have to prevent that from happening? Other than.
It's the elimination of the lower level of the parking garage going across street. Which they don't want. But that's the solution.
We, we, we force them to do all of the exiting onto Arbor Way.
So it would be a, a no right turn out of the, out of the site to Cross.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I, I understand that. That's helpful context if we can just verify with Chris that that's a valid remedy.
So, so one thing, so for example, if they, that is not a valid remedy, that means I don't want to have to do this, but if that is not a valid remedy, we could then make it a condition at the beginning, no right turn on a low level. I'm not saying we do it, but I'm saying if we could do it now, but you're saying we potentially can't do it later is what it sounds like.
Well, we're not doing it now because we've had this discussion and they really wanted to be able to have
correct.
Two ways to exit and.
And that was validated.
Doesn't work. You know, we, we want to be able to impose that it goes only, only, only Arbor Way.
And GPI validated that it made the most, that they agreed with the foundational concept, the strategy and the tactic of this self-selection. And that it would, and that it would reduce by its very nature.
I don't know about any, anybody else, but I'm sitting here holding it in. If I don't go to the bathrooms.
So what do we, so I, I, I've, I've got to run as well. So we can't, can, so what do we do? Reschedule this or we pick this up?
Yeah.
Well, I, I finished with my comments. I do have one, one.
I'm going to take, I'm going to take what I have so far and I'm going to prepare a draft decision, which you will consider at your meeting on December the fifth.
I just have one more comment that has nothing to do with our drafting of anything here. But we have a fascinating law in Massachusetts that trespassing on private property is not a crime unless it's actually posted no trespassing. Which is an interesting law. And what I might suggest to the neighbors, I don't know what the situation is for Putnam Road, but certainly for the driveways in the condos. Perhaps we, somebody should let the neighbors know if they put up signs that say private property, no trespassing.
Mm-hmm.
Now, when people drive onto those roads without permission, they're committing a crime.
Mm-hmm. I was thinking the same thing.
If you write down the plate number and give it to the police department, they may be able to go after those people and give them tickets.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, and, um, that's, because those have really, what I discovered from what was said by the attorney, uh, who came to the meeting and so is that those are not even private ways. They are driveways.
They're driveways.
For that condominium.
That's a good point. That's a good point. Do I, can I call? Can I call Howard Goldman? And make that suggestion to him? Lee? Is that something?
No, 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 it's not appropriate. Lee can, Lee can, but you can't.
Yeah, Lee?
Okay, I'll call him.
Yeah.
The other, and then would we make a condition that the, that the landlord pays to install that sign? At the, at both entrances at.
Let them work that out with the landlord. Let them first decide that that's what they want to do.
Right.
Because we already have that the landlord will consult with these people.
And Paul is, that, uh, uh, Putnam is a private way. Can you do the same thing on?
I don't, I don't know the law on that. You can certainly, they can certainly do it on the driveways.
Yeah.
But you know, if you drive up Putnam and then you can't turn onto the driveways because it's private property.
Then you're just at a dead end turning around anyway.
Yeah.
So it's, it's now almost one forty. So. This is not the last of our discussion of the decision. Lee is now going to uh, draft the decision.
Yep.
And we'll have that at our next meeting, which is what date?
I think December the fifth.
December fifth, yep.
At December fifth. And then, uh. So. Hopefully we'll have had, you know, you'll have had Evan's comments by then too. Um. You know, so, you know, uh, hopefully. You know, he doesn't get it on the, on the first or the fourth. Uh, and then. Um, I, I have still have some other comments. I'll have to email them to you maybe over the weekend, uh, depending what time I want in my next meeting. Um.
Will we adjourn?
We have. A second by Gene, uh, uh, any discussion? Hearing that, I'm going to come to the roll call vote. Um. Uh, Paul Alpert.
Hi.
Artie Crocker.
Hi.
Uh, Gene McKnight.
Hi.
Chair of outside.
Okay.
Good weekend, thanks.
Thanks, guys.